Meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at 6:00 PM. Are we good out in the audience? Is everybody okay? Because I'm hearing a little bit of static from the audience, so let's just keep that low, please. Especially since we're going to have a moment of silence for the eighteen children that were killed in Uvalde, Texas, and the three adults. And it seems like the number is going to go higher. That's what my gut feeling is telling me based on what I've heard. So let's spend a moment of silence in honor of those children and their parents who are going through things and the adults who were passed away. May they rest in peace. And may God's heavenly light shine upon them perpetually. Okay. I'm going to ask... I'll do the invocation today. I didn't expect to. And then we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Montero. So if everybody could please bow their heads. And we ask the good Lord for His heavenly intercession, especially right now that what happened in Texas. The parents are suffering so much. The children are in pains at the hospital right now. And may God's heavenly angels come and give us a little bit of relief, a little bit of comfort, so that, you know, no more children will pass away. No more adults will pass away. And that that city will be able to be reborn, recreate its energy that it had previous to this. And that the country really reflect on itself and see what kind of solution can be done to prevent these things from happening. And may God give every single decision maker the wisdom to do the right decision, to work together, to try to find the right decision to prevent deaths, not for political reasons. And that may God help bless our city. We have people who are suffering within our city, whether it's emotionally, financially. And may God also pray for us as decision makers up here to give us the wisdom to make the best decision to impact the most people here in the city of Hawthorne. I ask this in God's name. Amen.
Amen.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just making a note that all members of the city council are present with the exception of Councilmember Patterson. As soon as he shows up, we'll recognize him and put into the record that he is present. Was that sufficient, Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, guys, we have two presentations with a large number of visitors here today. So we ask everybody in the audience, we're happy to see you here and we're excited and grateful for what you've done for the community and stepped up. So I personally am going to ask on behalf of the city council is that once you hear your name, are we going to ask them to come up here? Once you hear your name, smoothly come through the side doors and just form a semicircle. Semicircle, not circle, semicircle, right? Kind of like half a moon, right? Here, so that we can... As we announce your names, and then you guys can be lined up, ready for a quick pic and handing off of your certificate. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just first of all acknowledge all of the participants that attended CERT. It was a three Saturday training course. It was great to see many individuals from the communities of Hawthorne, Longdale, and Gardena participating. I also would like to thank LA County Fire for their efforts in providing the training. And I just want to be able to acknowledge everyone here today that's in attendance and also wanted to assure that the mayor and the city council also acknowledged you as well. So thank you for coming. And I will ask Mr. Sam English, no relation, to come up to the podium so he could read the certs out loud. And then, once you read the cert, if you could come into the horseshoe so we could take a photo.
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and honorable members of the city council. I'd like to say just a few words quickly about Tri-City CERT. Can you guys hear me? Thank you. Tri-City Community Emergency Response Team is an association that is all volunteer-based. And what they do, they have been organized to help in disaster preparedness or in emergency response for citizens, not only Hawthorne but Gardena and Longdale. They accomplish this through participation in community awareness events, various training programs, and drills. We also provide volunteer support to fire and police departments based upon activation when called upon. Their vision is to train residents to be prepared in events of disaster. And we deploy resources who can assist in emergency services, again, upon request. And as you, Councilwoman Reyes English just mentioned, we, the City of Hawthorne, held its CERT training. We're supposed to do it earlier, pre-COVID, but we're just really excited it happened. And, you know, we are really thankful and grateful for LA County Fire, our board, our volunteers, and our participants that arrived. Thank you so much, and hopefully we can do it again within the next few years. That being said, I'd like to acknowledge, first, the board members. Jose Hernandez, Cindy Matsuda. You guys can come up.
Okay. Do you hear your name? Please make your way actually that way. Go towards the outside so that you can come in through the sides, please. You're gonna have to have the long way, miss. When you hear your name, please walk out towards the sides so you guys can come up, okay?
Stuart Gorski. Gary Kenishiro. Kenneth Lamar. Jim Matthews. Richard Chaplin.
We'll take you all over here in the middle of the horseshoe. Please walk over this way. Coming to the middle of the horseshoe.
Jim Tucker. Flor Tucker. Donald Tucker. Barbara Phillips. Artie Bailey. Juro Maeda. Kerry Scott. Robin Kagamoto. I don't know if she's here, but is it Du Pham? Rugan. Mildred Castro. Don Campbell. We need LA County Fire, Rosemary. And our battalion chief, Martin Mayer. And Councilwoman Reyes English, I'd like to ask, once we get a photo of them, can we get a photo of our participants that arrived too? I don't have their names, but after...
Absolutely. Anybody that's here that didn't have their name read out, please come up to the front so that we could acknowledge you too.
Okay. Do you want to get the photo here first and then we'll have our participants come up?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And anyone that's missing a cert, we'll make sure to get you a cert also. City Council and Mayor, if you could please join us at the horseshoe for a photo, please.
All right. There you go. Now I can see you. All right, yep, now you're all good. And then, three, two, one. One second. I'm gonna take a couple more. Three, two, one. And the last one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
May the council remain, may you guys remain, and I'm going to call up the participants. Okay, good.
We want you to stay up.
Fire and the mayor.
Councilmembers.
Mr. Mayor.
With our participants.
And I want you guys too with them. Yes, ma'am. Oh, you sure? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so all those who participated, please comment up. Great program. I did this one about, how long ago was it, Jim, that I did it? Like about eight or nine years ago, something like that. A real good program. About, ah, you were there, weren't you? I think I met you. One of you. I don't remember. I seen a couple of you guys. All right.
All right, here we go. And three, two, one. Three, two, one. And last one. And three, two, one.
Yeah, I should prepare like some water and food.
Yeah, just put, I like just down, like get a whole apple right before I walk in. Just because I'm gonna be stark.
Yeah, so I brought some backup chips.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Mr. English is going to give everyone their certs out in the lobby.
Let's give him a big round of applause. It's serious, intensive training, so.
Yeah. Get to mention, these are what the bags look like. That's what the bag looked like.
Okay, I did it once. Councilmember Montero did it twice. I'm just kidding. He only did it once, too. It was good, very good. And we also have to promote the Police Citizens Academy, too. We gotta get some of those people to come and speak of their experiences over here. Councilmember Olivia Valentine also has a presentation on the agenda. Hawthorne Business Expo 2022: Highlights and Acknowledgements. Recognize some of the participation. Go ahead, ma'am.
Can you get that to bomb?
Just bring it up a little. It's different.
The purpose of the Hawthorne Business Expo is to reach as many businesses and potential businesses and provide them with resources to help them grow. We did this in two days this year. Usually, we had done it in one. This year, we tried it in two. On day one, through panel discussions in which local businesses discuss their challenges because of COVID-19. We also had eight seminars in a classroom setting, educating businesses on tools they need in order to be top performers in their fields. On day two, we had the exposition, which featured approximately seventy local businesses showing their products and services. I think we have a video to give you an idea of what we did.
The Seventh Annual Hawthorne Business Expo 2022 returned to in person at the Hawthorne Memorial Center.
The two-day event kicked off on day one with a panel discussion and then broke off into several seminars.
We have our theme, Revis, Rebuild, and Reconnect. And we're trying to help them do just that.
I think having those different rooms and seminars, they can learn how to start and learn from others that have already grown in the past.
Hawthorne Mayor Alex Vargas summed up the importance of this event and the importance of supporting local businesses.
We're a great place to do business. We're looking at increasing the rate of success and profitability for our businesses, not just have you here. Make sure that we create the conditions so you can thrive.
Two Hawthorne businesses were also recognized and awarded Business of the Year at the Business Expo.
Both of these breweries offer various types of craft beers. But Hawthorne breweries are much more than a unique space of sampled brews.
Huge, huge, huge honor. My dad actually grew up in Hawthorne many years ago and worked for the city in the eighties. It's really, it was fun for my family to be back in the city.
We appreciate all the support. The pandemic was obviously difficult for everyone, but the city's stuck with us, the community, and we're back open and ready to go.
On day two, a wide range of exhibitors set up to provide valuable information to guests during the four-hour networking event.
We have eighty businesses registered today. And they are from different areas, different companies, different industries. And so they're all here today to show the public their products and services.
It's our first year participating, and it's great. There's a lot of people here. We're making a lot of connections and it's really working out well for us.
It's really great to meet people that are actually in the community. I've gotten already a couple cards of like caterings we can use and businesses like ours.
A networking event that has been beneficial to many businesses as they return year after year.
It was great. I got a lot of contacts. Can't wait to do it again. I love to be part of the community, so I like to meet all the people in the community, and this is a great way to do it.
Councilwoman Olivia Valentine says she's happy with the success of the expo and being able to help local businesses benefit and succeed.
To learn about other city events, visit the city website at www.cityofhawthorne.org.
So obviously, there are a lot of people to thank for participating in this event. I have three categories of people to thank. First of all, our panelists. The panel leader is here. I see Barbara Levine. So I'm going to ask you if you hear your name to come up. But this is, and wait until I read the description of what your panel was about. The panel, "We appreciate your leading a vibrant, informative discussion at Hawthorne Business Expo 2022 on the theme Revis, Rebuild, and Reconnect. Your discussion helped to make the experiences of the businesses real to the audience as the business owners told their stories of the effect COVID-19 had on them. Their description of the challenges was an inspiration to all who heard the discussion and especially to those who struggled with their own businesses. We are extremely proud to have you as part of our community. This City of Good Neighbors presented this 24th day of May, 2022." Barbara, please come up. You can stand right here in the horseshoe. The next group of people are the people who led the seminars. And I see a representative here from that group as well. And this is Chris Cagle from the South Bay Workforce Investment Board. There are two, actually, two representatives here. Chris Cagle from the South Bay Workforce Investment Board. And this is what the, "Thank you for your important contribution to Hawthorne Business Expo 2022, held on April 26, 2022. We appreciate your leading the informative seminar, apprenticeship and training support at no cost for your small business." Chris, please come up. I see someone else here who was a seminar leader. This one is for Omari Valentine. "Thank you for your important contribution to Hawthorne Business Expo 2022. We appreciate your leading the informative seminar, Four Steps for Building an Unforgettable Brand Presence While Optimizing for Search." And next, I want to recognize the members of my committee who were so absolutely important in bringing this important expo to the public. First, I want to thank Vontray Norris, Hawthorne City Manager. I don't see Kewana Bowie, but she is here. I'm going to, I'm going to read the names of my committee members. Eric Chavez, the head of Hawthorne Television. Is Amy Yoshida, Lieutenant Amy Yoshida here? I saw her a minute ago. See who else is here from the committee. Omari Valentine from Off the Lip is also here, and he's already stood up. I don't see anyone else here from the committee, but I'm going to read their names. Miguel Alvarado. Starlene Van Buren. Michelle Lo Grande. Mikel Rito. Dan Blasky. Oh, is Dan here? I'm sorry. Dan, please come up. Joseph Simone. Dawn Harris Benton. Damon Skinner. Tom Quintana. And Harold Johnson from Los Angeles World Airport. Thank you all so much. I'm going to come down and take a picture with you. Would my council members join me, please?
So next, we have Public Works Director Alan Lung, which has a presentation on the agenda. The T-Parking. The T-Parking video from the news service. I already talked to you, Mr. City Manager, about the PSA, the different approach on that, but...
Absolutely. I spoke to our police chief, and he understands the directive that was given. Alan's gonna make his way from downstairs and come to the podium.
Okay. This is a beautiful news report from our city news service, right? Is that the same one we're talking about?
Yes, absolutely. We can move forward with the PSA, the news piece. And if you have any questions, Alan can be ready to answer those questions.
The City of Hawthorne implemented a new parking pilot program to help with parking in the city. Lauren McKay has the story.
No more parking laws. Okay, maybe not right away, but that's the goal of these brand-new street guidelines. Where to park? Sometimes in the city, it's a bit challenging for residents to figure that out.
So the problem is that in the city, there is a limited amount of parking spaces on the streets.
Parking incidents like this happening all the time.
Residents have told the city that there is a need for better parking.
And now, the city is doing something about it.
A solution that we've come up with is a parking T-pilot program.
Painting the town red, well, more like white. Putting these specific parking guidelines in place to help cut out confusion. This is a pilot program, only being placed on select streets for now.
That means everyone hopefully will have a space to park on the street.
If the plan goes well in the next three months, the city will expand the painted guidelines to the rest of the residential neighborhoods, which could mean less tickets for everyone. For HCTV, I'm Lauren McKay.
For updates on other ways the city is working on making improvements for its citizens, visit the city website at www.cityofhawthorne.org.
Awesome presentation. So, um, I just wanted to comment on my behalf. Members of the City Council were aware of that we were going to do this. At different points, I guess in my trajectory here at, as an elected official, the topic would come up about T-parking. So it's a cu- uh, accumulation of requests from the community to be able to address the parking issue. And also different ideas that multiple individuals here on the City Council have had over the years. And so whether it was myself or another colleague here on council, we directed staff to do a pilot project to see how, we know it's going to work out. Because when you have two parking spaces in front of a house, and somebody straddles both of those available parking spaces, that takes away two parking spots for two cars. They save it there, uh, that spot, those two spots. And then when the relative comes home, they move it over, and then they, they come in. So in the meantime, nobody else got, had parking. But they have their driveways empty, and they don't do anything with that. They park their big trucks out there, and their big old vans out there, and they have the driveway empty when they could be putting, putting cars inside their driveway. So I think it's very selfish. Honestly, it's some of our residents, and irresponsible. So some of the good citizens here in the City of Hawthorne asked us to be able to implement something like this and find other solutions. So, uh, we need full compliance from the whole community. If your car doesn't fit within those stripe lines, it's because it's too big. Either find a larger spot around, then around the street, or park it inside your driveway and maybe bring out a smaller car. Exchange the smaller car for the larger car that's out there. We need full compliance because once people are parked within those parking spaces, the amount of parking will go a long, long way. I'm sorry I speak so, uh, so strongly about this. It's just that, uh, we just need full compliance from everybody. There will be penalties. And if, I'd like to discuss what the penalties are, Mr. City Attorney. Real soon, if you could do like a, uh, legal confidential on that. See what the state allows us to take it up to. Um, and, uh, we do just need to make sure that those are the most impactful types of, uh, levels of finding. But I've been receiving heck of a lot of calls and emails saying this is a great thing that we've done. So people are happy. Obviously, the people who are not happy with those are the ones that have like five cars in one household. So, sorry about that, but, you know, park those inside your driveways. So thank you, Eric. And, uh, the PSA aspect of it, I'd like to discuss with you, our city manager and the police chief. I have some ideas on how to present that. Okay? So... Where, is he here? Oh, you're so, you're so far in the back, man. Come on up. Can you, uh, whatever you were gonna say, maybe if answering questions or whatever, but if you could just tell us, uh, what the impetus of this was and the logistics of it?
Uh, yes. Um, we were following the direction of the City Council and the mayor, trying to maximize the number of on-street parking space out there to help our residents. Uh, so this is one way, a pilot program that we use to, to help the situation. And we also has a lot of assistance from our PD to help the enforcement. And we also want to thank you, Cable, to put in this PSA. So, thank you.
And we have citations that are ready to be issued. I would rather have that than warnings. I think the warnings, people, I've heard of...
I think they have been issuing citations.
Citations, but I have a re- a couple of people who have contacted me and say of that, uh, warnings have been issued, warning citations that don't come with a fine or a penalty. So people just keep doing it over and over because they don't feel like it's gonna have any, you know... There's no penalty, there's no repercussion.
Yeah, I think at the beginning, they are skipping out warning citations and then follow up with actual citations.
I think we're ready for the full extent of the program. I, I think Councilwoman English agrees because she lives on a street that's impacted like that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's give a big round of applause. And thank you to our Public Works Department and our Police Department for working together on this.
Yeah, our staff.
Mr. Clerk, the guidelines for oral communication, sir.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks shall be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, report, or recommendation. Mr. Mayor, in addition to the speaker cards, eight emails were received today thanking the city manager and the park and recreation office for the upgrades recently done at Holly Park.
That's beautiful. Congratulations, Von, you see? A lot, you have your team here, your council member team here, your Public Works, even the Parks and Rec team. So congratulations to all of you. Big round of applause for them.
Thank you.
Making things happen. Okay, so let's move on to...
The speaker card.
Could you acknowledge, do you have a list of, do you have a list of the emails from who they were?
No, I do not.
Okay, maybe...
You'll be forwarded those emails.
Pardon me?
You'll, you'll get, you'll receive those emails.
Gordon Michael Migo, please. Welcome, sir. Good to see you back, sir.
Yeah. Hello, everyone, and I hope my visit finds you all well and greetings to all. Gordon Michael Migo. A stakeholder's group of residents, business owners, civic leaders in the City of Hawthorne are seeking to reestablish a hospital on the side of the Robert F. Kennedy Medical Center that will have a full range of care, which will serve our community in other areas. The city, the size and stature of Hawthorne, needs at least one major hospital. Our community has seen its share of growth in population, which will likely reach 100,000 or more in the near future. With SpaceX, which has more than 7,000 employees, the Hawthorne Renaissance Plaza, which can be a large mall for shopping, dining, and entertainment, and other development projects which includes hotels and so forth, there will be a much greater need, excuse me, for major healthcare facilities to serve the needs of the people in South Bay area and of LA County. Since mid-1990s, LA County has seen a number of hospitals with ERs and trauma units reduced from 24 to eight. We cannot afford to lose any more public or private hospitals. Obviously, when a natural disaster strikes, an urban conflict occurs, may, uh, some major catastrophes happens, our healthcare system will be greatly overwhelmed by the number of casualties. According to the Hospital Association of Southern California, closure of RFK Medical Center of Hawthorne in December 23rd of 2004 created a large hole in the network of hospitals in LA County. Even with the Martin Luther King Hospital in South Los Angeles, there will be a lack of sufficient bed space for patients. We want to establish the RFK Medical Center as a nonprofit hospital that would be operated under a public-private partnership. It would become part of a new medical and social services district. That includes office buildings for medical groups, rehabilitation center for U.S. military veterans, and so on, and other facilities. Our efforts are supported by federal, state, uh, county, and local officials who are committed to this important project and can obtain the necessary government assistance. On the private side, there are foundations, corporations, and so on, which have expressed interest in providing donations. In conclusion, we look forward to you joining this venture. Excuse me. And that will be positively rewarding for everyone in the course of serving the needs of the people in Hawthorne and the other areas in the 21st century. The William Hassan Foundation can provide true meaning to supporting Hawthorne for the betterment of Hawthorne, that is shown on their promotional billboards in our city. In communities with at least one major hospital, the leading members of society have set aside their personal desires and have combined their financial resources to improve the quality of life for every individual. And, uh, that, that I hope will come to fruition sooner rather than later. I thank you. And, uh, end up.
Thank you, Mr. Migo. Welcome back once more. And we see a lot of the residents that are visiting us today, kind of like, I, I, same usual spots from two years ago, so it's awesome, it's awesome, it's, it's good to be back, right? Do we have anybody else? Mr. City Clerk? Sir, are you going to speak? Go ahead, sir.
My apologies, I didn't do a speaker card, but, um, uh, my name is Chris Cagle. I'm with the South Bay Workforce Investment Board. And for those that may not know what we do, we help people find jobs and help businesses find workers for the city. We're a strong partner with your community. And recently, I, I believe all of you will recall, you had the foresight to put your employees through customer service training, acknowledging how important that is in the community. And I think it was the city manager, but, uh, the suggestion was made, well, let's create a certificate that we could hang in city halls. So we did that. We created a beautiful certificate and got it framed for you. And, uh, hopefully you'll display this prominently so the public can see. And it reads, "Certification of Completion of Customer Service Training to the City of Hawthorne Employees, certifies attainment of the following workplace skills: What customers want, first impressions, positive attitude, communication skills, listening to customers, telephone customer service, handling difficult customers, last impressions, and traits of ideal employees." And signed by the mayor, the manager, our executive director, Jan Volker, and our chairperson, Wayne Spencer. So, uh, thank you very much for participating in this program, and, uh, we're happy that we were able to provide it to your employees at no cost to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have no other cards. If there is no one else who wishes to address the, these bodies, I declare oral communication close ordered. Mr. Clerk, your consent calendar, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have five items on the consent calendar. There are items eight, nine, 10, 12, and 13 for your consideration and approval. Item eight, approval of City Council minutes for the meetings of June 8th, 2021, June 22nd, 2021, and October 12th, 2021. Items nine, item nine, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and/or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item 10, City Treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Resolutions. Item 12, Resolution Number 8357, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, adopting a list of projects for fiscal year 2022 through 23, funded by SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. Item 13, Resolution Number 8358, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving the application for grants for the Bureau of Reclamation's Water Smart Drought Response Program for fiscal year 2022, '23, for the Holly Park Multi-Benefit Drought Resilience and Stormwater Infiltration Project for adoption.
I move?
Second.
Please vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson? Okay. The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. That concludes my consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And it looks like you guys had the electricians look through all our buttons here, so it looks like it's good. Thank you so much, Mr. City Manager and staff. For item 14, there are no bids at this time. We have one public hearing on the agenda, Mr. Clerk.
Now, yes. Now is the time and place for a public hearing for the draft of, draft allocation plan for the Home Investment Partnerships American Rescue Home ARP funds. Housing Department's declaration of publication filed, no written communications were received. Recommended motion, staff advises that the City Council, one, conduct the public hearing and receive comments on the draft allocation plan for the Home Investment Partnerships American Rescue Plan program; two, adopt draft allocation plan for the House Investment Partnerships American Rescue Plan program; three, authorize the city manager or designee to execute, amend, and submit to HUD all plans and documents necessary to administer the Home ARP allocation plan; four, authorize the appropriation of funds for the Home ARP allocation plan.
I move? Please, uh, please go ahead and vote.
It's a public hearing. It's public hearing.
Okay, first, before we proceed, you're correct. Are there any, uh, speakers?
No, there are not.
Okay. So the, uh, public hearing is close ordered. I make a motion? Please vote. Thank you.
Sorry. Sorry, I've got a little cough going. The vote reflects mayor and council, city council voting yes.
I didn't know it was such an emotional, uh, item. Okay.
It's been a rough week.
Next, we have ordering this item 18.
Okay, ordinance number 2231, second reading and ordinance of the City Council, City of Hawthorne, adopting Military Equipment Policy of the City of Hawthorne, California in compliance with Assembly Bill 481, motion to adopt.
I move?
Second.
I think it's gonna go to Mayor Pro Tem on the second. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Thank you, council. Uh, we have nothing in the general matter section, so we're gonna move on to the city manager's consent calendar. Uh, Mr. City Manager, I understand that the city clerk will be reading your consent calendar today and in all the future city council meetings. That's, that's the case, right? You agree with that? Um, if there's any questions, though, you'll, you'll address them as they come up. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please proceed with, uh, reading items number 21 to 28.
Mayor, the eight items in the ma- in the city manager consent calendar for the record are: Item 21, City of Hawthorne's investment report for the quarter ended March 31st, 2022. Intern, in item 22, internships with elected officials. Item 23, progress payment number two in the amount of $550, $5,957.10 to Southwest Pipeline and Trenches Corporation of Torrance, California for the sewer improvement project 2022, project number 21-07. Item 24, progress payment number four in the amount of $110,065.81 to United Storm Water Incorporated Industry, California for the street inlet improvement project Phase 2, project number 20-07. Item 25, progress payment number eight and final acceptance in the amount of $193,895.70 due to Martinez Landscape Company, Inc. of Silmar, California for general maintenance, project number 15-02. Item 26, the renomination of incumbent members Mark Weiss, President of Commercial Consulting Incorporated, and Jamin Galman, Head of Diversity, Inclusion, and Learning at SpaceX, to fill the Hawthorne business private sector seats. Item 27, review of the Quarter III Financial Report for fiscal year 2021 through 2022. Item 28, study on request for housing commission. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. I have a motion to approve the city manager's consent calendar, item 21 through 28.
I move for 28.
A motion. Mr. City Attorney? When I have a motion, and in between, there was a motion to discuss, and then the second followed that? What's proper protocol? We'll take the precedence?
So, uh, every, um, we go, there's a motion and a second, and there could be a vote for all items except the item that was pulled by Councilman Patterson.
Okay, sir, go ahead. Um, yeah, let's just go ahead to discussion on whatever item we had.
Uh, Mr. City Manager? Yes, I'm gonna have Kimberly Mack, Housing Director, assist with the questions for this item.
For which one?
Number 28, with the housing commission.
28.
Good evening.
Evening. Good evening. Could you just kind of review the, the fine points of the different options of the housing commission? I saw there's, um, two different ones. And then within the second, there's a few different approaches.
Sure.
So the housing commission generally is created to either act as the authority figure who actually does the, the work that we do in our housing department as a housing commission for city affairs. And the second type of housing commission is ones who acts as an advisory capacity for housing affairs. So those are the two main types that you'll see in the cities that I researched for this report. And then the different processes or steps that they include are actually the responsibilities of those. And most of them are establishing policies for affordable housing, for requesting financial assistance, for incentives for development programs, for establishing amendments to other programs and services that are already established, or for special programs, working with the planning commission to establish housing within the city. So they're more geared towards the overall look of the city, bringing housing to the city. The second sample or type, same makes policy recommendations and including preserving or creating housing opportunities, creating government plans and actually reviewing the budget of the housing departments or the housing funding that is, the funding that is used for, for the, from the city for housing as a whole, encourages other partnerships with preservation of housing. And then the third type that you find, again, acts as an advisory capacity and councils, to the council, and assists with developing long-range objectives or goal for housing in the community. Also, they review and make intake recommendations or make recommendations on matters for housing authority, such as, say, my Section 8 program, they could act as my hearing board to terminate participants from the program. So those are the main types that I was able to research and find as responsibilities for housing commissions. And so we were trying to get an understanding of what the city was requesting for the housing commission for the City of Hawthorne would look like.
So I, I can mention the things that I had in mind, and you can tell me what you think would make the most amount of sense for the City of Hawthorne. What I had in mind is to have some type of board that has some kind of teeth if there are any slum lords operating in the City of Hawthorne, if we have tenants saying that, hey, there's no water in my place, or there's sewage, and this is some things that I've heard people say, you know, pipes burst, you know, multiple times, and, and feces and stuff got in my place, and it's just a reoccurring issue, and I'm not able to, you know, there's bugs from the, the tenants next door, and blah, 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 you know, that the landlord's not really keeping their property in. And I don't know all the rules about what they should be doing or not be doing, but certainly not following all the rules on how, how they maintain a property, providing the right type of basic necessities, that they have some, someplace they can go to outside of calling the county, you know, someplace they can come to in the City of Hawthorne to express, you know, these issues that we can have code enforcement look into that. And if there's any merit to it, that that agency can do something, right? What, I don't know. But they can, they can, you know, order some kind of repairs, some type of fines, some type of whatever. I know there's some tenants that feel like they are being encouraged to leave their, their units, you know, and, and landlords may not be following the law in how their, the taxes they're using, so they have someplace they can go to for that. And then I even had a landlord call me and say that, you know, he's, he's having an issue where his lease doesn't allow for a commercial business to be running in his, in his unit, but the tenant is running a daycare out of her unit, and, you know, he wants to have some kind of recourse to be able to terminate that lease. He feels that the courts are pretty tenant friendly, and it'd be helpful if we had, say, some kind of commission that had investigated such a complaint and found that there was. So in this case, he would, I guess, come to the commission with his complaint, code enforcement go and investigate, see if there is a business indeed being run out of that, that facility, require a business license to be, to be obtained, and if, you know, it's, we may provide a, some type of evidence to that landlord that there is a business being, being run there, so then he can use that as support when he goes to court for eviction to say this person's violating the lease. So those are things that, some of the things that I had in mind for a housing commission. I think that some of these other things that other housing commissions do are valuable. What would you recommend if we had a housing commission that they did?
If we had a housing commission, I would not recommend that they take on tenant landlord issues. Why? Because we have our code enforcement department that can address many of the issues that are in place. We don't want to overstep their responsibilities. We also have the Department of Health, LA Department of Health, who deals with the slum lords and the, you know, the deficiencies within buildings. We don't want to take over their responsibilities either. And then we also already have under contract issue a grant to Fair Housing, who provides education, mediation, and legal services for tenants and landlords. We don't want to step on their, their grounds either. If we were going to have a housing commission, I would have a housing commission and come in and figure out how we can deal with our affordable housing issues.
I think that's great to, to do that. You make a great point as far as we have other agencies that supposed to support tenants in those areas, but I've, most tenants will say that that's not happening for them. So what do we do?
So if I may interject, sorry. The habitability issues of rental units are exclusively in the jurisdiction of the county health department. So what code enforcement, in the years past, we had a program where code enforcement, along with the health department and the fire department and whatnot, we would have, it was called Cannon Inspection, and we'll go through some of these apartments and check the habitability issues. But ultimately, the, the enforcement action will be taken up by the health department. That's the county jurisdiction. Code enforcement is limited to city code violations, typically housing code violations, such as overgrown weed, things of that nature. Additionally, building and safety department has, if it's a physical structure that's causing a danger to the, to the tenants or the, to the residents, they could red tag the, the apartment units based on the physical structure dangers that's caused by that. In terms of specific issues that comes between the landlord and tenants, those are issues that I would recommend that we be very cautious in approaching that. Perhaps we could form a commission to help with mediation, but to step in the, what is essentially a civil dispute between the landlord and the, and the tenant, for a city to get involved with that is also potentially causes liability for the city as well. So there are agencies that help tenants resolve certain issues with the landlords, but those are private matters, even habitability issues. If, if they have proper legal representation, the tenants could take up those issues in, with the courts. In terms of, you mentioned specifically daycare units. I, I know the state regulates daycare, daycare units, and it basically, due to the lack of daycare in the state, they have allowed easy access to opening daycares in residential areas. However, inside an apartment unit, is that, that would be a legal issue that I would have to look into and come back to you with. In terms of business license, anybody that conducts business, business is required to have a license in the city, so that's a different issue.
So I think it's a great suggestion of some type of commission that maybe can mediate some disputes. I'd like to get some information about any examples of where that might exist elsewhere, so I can form more of an opinion about that. And it sounds like some of the other issues could be addressed with much more aggressive code enforcement.
It would be code enforcement in conjunction with the health department. So, you know, the...
But originate with, from our code, code enforcement, or, or they would be involved in some of these things that I mentioned as far as seeing there's some certain type of violations.
So some of the issues that our code enforcement would run into is they would not have access to the, to the private units, unless they were to get a inspection warrant from the court, and which is something that, you know, due to our understaffing with code enforcement, we can assist with that, but in order to get an inspection warrant issued, it would have to be, we would have to give 24-hour notice to the, to the tenants and to the building.
Let me interrupt for a second. So if the tenant says that space is not habitable, then they complain to the health department? And then the health department, will they come out and do the inspection?
If they have the capacity and the manpower to do so, I don't know how long, I can't say how long it would take, but that is a jurisdiction that the health department would take over. And, you know, for them, since it would be tenant-originated type of complaint, that they would be invited in. But for code enforcement to go in there and start investigating, for instance, we had a specific situation where somebody even came to council meeting and complained about the conditions with the landlord and whatnot, but the, that was a situation where that particular tenant didn't allow code enforcement to enter his unit. So there isn't really much anything that the code enforcement can do at that point, nor, once they come in, aside from, typically code enforcement deals with things that are visible from the outside, which they could cite the, the landlord. But we're talking about the living conditions, habitability issues, those will require an invitation from the tenant, and that is an issue that is addressed by the LA County Health Department. Similar to, I guess, it would be similar to a restaurant type of thing. It's, it's, it's not something that the code enforcement handles. That's something that's more trained and, and handled by the county health, health department.
Okay. Could you, yeah, provide me some more information about anybody else that does some type of mediation? So we got some information on that to, to make some kind of decision. And if there's any recommendations of some things that we can do differently to support tenants that are some, going through some of the issues that I, that I brought up, I do believe there are some bad actors in terms of our landlord, some landlords in the City of Hawthorne, and there has to be something that we can do. So, you know, saying that, hey, it's some, somebody else is dropping a ball on it is not enough. I know there are neighborhoods, there are cities, there are communities where these things don't happen, and so there should be something we can do. So whatever recommendation that you can make to help us support our tenants much better would be great. And, and I, I do like the idea of having a housing commission that helps us to, how did you word it?
To establish more affordable housing in the city.
Yeah, exactly. So if you guys can kind of bring this back, again, with a little bit more information for us to discuss and decide about.
I just wanted to, just wanted to give a couple of feedback, a little bit of feedback myself, and I think this is good, and I think that there's room for a commission here in the City of Hawthorne that deals with housing, whether it's that, whether it's the mediation aspect. But I think we need to be careful, though, because I have had examples of, I have had also examples of tenants who find that using the, the, the public health department and using agencies against the tenants, against, against landlords, in order to just combat a, you know, raising rent that they're not happy with, and so they use that as well. So I just want to just make sure that we're not put in the middle of a intense legal battle, if that ever comes up, because I think we could easily be, be included in that. And I think we should just be very careful, not necessarily to take either the landlord's side or the tenant's side, because we could just be opening up a can of worms for ourselves. And, hey, if we're complaining about the expenses of the city attorney's office, the, those expenses are going to increase exponentially, I think, if we get caught up in some of those things. But like, again, this is good. A housing commission, I think, would be something I'd be willing to look into and how we can implement something.
To the chair.
Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Kimberly. I do agree we maybe could have a committee that just on advisory side, right? Not, not, not to establish no, no policies, because I think this body is in charge of housing, right? Baseds on the, on the, on the state and federal. So we're the one who have to establish policy, even on affordable housing, low-income house, all, all those types. So I would suggest maybe only on advisory way, like Mr. Kim and like Mayor Pro Tem said, you know, to, to advise in some issues, or maybe to, to arbitration type of mediation, if you got issues with the Section 8 tenants, to help you come up with a solution that is not just staff making that decision, but it's an advisory group from the community that will help you make those decisions. Because we have to be very careful, because housing issues is, is, is very challenged. And we are the one who have to make policies about affordable housing and low-income housing, and not people that might be part of that commission, okay? So I would, I would not put that task on them. And, and the mayor state a very positive thing that sometimes the tenants use the public health department against the landlords because they're not happy, or I have sent them a notice of pay your rent or quit, and then they try to find issues and then report you to the health department, and yet the health department sometimes takes 45 days, 90 days to show up, right? And then sometimes they find nothing. But I think what we need to do is have a fact sheet at the housing to give the people, okay, if you have issues with your landlord with pipes and roaches, et cetera, et cetera, or mold, call the health department. So give them the notice, because some, some people, sometimes they say, you know, I don't know, but we'll, she'll call, you know, LA County, you know, they had to call Inglewood, blah, 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 right? And then, you know, like you said, we have contracts with the Housing Rights Center to help people, so have like a fact sheet with these numbers, and even the Legal Aid Foundation have lawyers that pro bono that help tenants dispute against the landlord, right? So maybe we have to just get those resources and have a fact sheet when people call here and then say, so, so here's the resource that you need to tap in, because like Mr. Kim said, the code enforcement is not the, the vehicle that's going to cite the, the landlord, so, when it comes to those disputes. Because, you know, I have dealt with, with these issues in, in the past, so I know exactly what I'm talking about, the tenants, and sometimes the landlords, but we would just have to refer them out to, to the Housing Rights Center, because, you know, even the Housing Rights Center back in 2001, that's when they began coming to Hawthorne at the Monita Gardens office, helping people dealing with the landlord's issues, and now we have all these eviction notice coming up, special people that had received money from the state to pay the rent, but they didn't pay all, all that money to the landlord. So we're going to have a lot of issues coming in soon. So thank you very much.
I may. I think those are great suggestions. At the direction of the city manager, we do have those resources on the housing webpage already, and for those individuals who call in, we do provide those resources orally. And one of the great things about the Fair Housing Center is they offer online training to landlords and tenants, so they can actually sit there and ask questions real time and get responses that they need to move forward. But I will definitely always revisit it and make sure that it's updated, and I can provide paper copies for the, the main entrances.
Thank you, Kimberly.
The chair. Thank you, Kimberly. I was sitting here and just, you know, listening to the pros and cons, right? Oftentimes, the calls that we receive as a council is because they're having issues that is related to their Section 8 being denied, or for instance, a dispute with the housing department, right? So when you talk about a commission, sometimes that would be good to have a commission that could be the mediator and is a independent entity that's listening to the matter from both sides, and then ultimately making a decision, right? So that would be one that I would think would benefit the city. I believe Hackla, the City of Los Angeles, has something similar for bereavement, not bereavement, excuse me, but disputes with regards to their Section 8, and they have caseworkers that they work with, but oftentimes there's disputes, and then those, those matters go before the commission. And the commission decides on whether or not they continue with their voucher, or they're denied a voucher. And there's different reasons why they're denied, because when you have a Section 8 voucher, there's very clear rules on who could live at the home, who cannot live at the home, et cetera. So that would be one benefit. The advisory board, in my opinion, would be different. It wouldn't have so much, I think, a sense of advisement, unless there are professionals that are skilled in either an attorney or other housing skill set that's familiar with housing laws. So when you talk about bringing community, it's not going to be beneficial. So when you talk about bringing community, it's not going to be beneficial to us if that community member has zero experience. So I'm listening to it and I appreciate Council Mayor Protem Patterson advocating to, to assure something like this is implemented. But having said that, I work with housing every day. I've been doing that for the last thirty years. In the city of Los Angeles, there's ten reasons for an eviction. And unless you have fallen that eviction, the ten reasons, you also have a relocation assistance that you need to provide to the family if you want them gone, okay? And then on top of that, there's more assistance for the tenant than there are the landlords, correct? Landlords oftentimes have the Realtors Association that you could go and work with, and they have attorneys that assist landlords, because they usually have monies that they pay anyway to the Realtors Association to be part of the board or that association so that they could look to them for assistance when they need it. Tenants do not have that. We have the Housing Rights Center that provides education and provides the do's and don'ts of the landlord and the tenant. And we always, Mayor, myself and others here, have referred constituents that contact us to one of those agencies. We're aware here on the council that we don't get into tenant landlord disputes. That is a legal matter among two parties that don't involve the city. And with regards to code enforcement and Department of Health, the city of Los Angeles has Building and Safety that goes and checks on residents, that is one unit, one dwelling on a lot. That's Building and Safety. Housing is multiple and apartments on a lot. So everybody has their, their jurisdictions, right? Here in the city of Hawthorne, excuse me, Building and Safety, that's not their purview or their legal obligations to go and inspect tenants' complaints on the apartment. It does go to the Department of Health, where they have inspectors that come out to the apartments. And they have inspectors and they advise, you know, the tenant of their rights and at the same time notify the landlord if there's corrections that need to be made. And they're given a certain amount of time to make those corrections. So I think at the end of the day, we just have to decide whether or not we want a commission that's going to be able to mediate disputes that are brought to us from the general public here in the city of Hawthorne that are renters and have matters before the city of Hawthorne Housing Department. And then at the same time, the advisory, I think, wouldn't truly benefit us. And if we're going to do something, I think, that has some meat and potatoes that could actually do something, it would be to, to make a commission that's charged to hear complaints and then ultimately provide a decision-making mechanism so that the housing department is not biased and the housing department has then the ability to move forward with other matters that they might be longevity that they've been working on or working with or trying to get rid of, in a sense. Do you understand what I'm saying by that? Because oftentimes case, your caseworkers have a case for a period of time. And there has to, it has to be remedied somehow. And so if there's no way of remedying that in your department, because it's he said, she said, and it's just an ongoing dispute, how then is that fixed? So if you have a commission that oversees those types of complaints and let the, the body of the commission make those decisions for you, I think it would be helpful for all of us, because then they would be able to hear their grievance before a board that's been made up of, of, you know, powers, authority powers. So those are my two cents. However, we get these cases all the time. We get these emails all the time. You know this, Mayor, city manager, attorney knows this. We try to do our best to help the residents of Hawthorne, but oftentimes, because we're under the jurisdiction of the city attorney's office, we're not able to do that. And we need to be aware of that so that we're not putting ourselves in a predicament that later on we're, we're called, you know, on a matter that we had nothing to do with. Thank you.
All right. Looks like, but it also, a quick comment, but it looks like you've been advised to give us a report based on the feedback you have, working with staff, to be able to examine the viability of this, which aspect of it we can implement. Is that okay? Go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. Kimberly, just, I would be a little bit worried about people making decisions. It should be just recommendation to the housing, how to proceed, but not to make a final decision, because that, I don't think that is the right way to do it, okay? Because, because it is complicated, especially because of HUD, right? Because the HUD have mandates and have policies that the housing department have to follow. And that is what you have to be very careful, because it's a critical situation, because, you know, we have been there. We, and you know who I'm talking about. So I don't think any commission cannot give you a final, a final decision. They would have to recommend to the housing department basis and even with the legal advice to see what is the next step, if they would accept the recommendation or not accept the recommendation. So I would not give them the power of making decision.
Okay, so I guess you've been advised to tell us the viability, be open with us. Tell us what you guys see is, you know, something that we can do. You need to speak openly with us.
Thank you.
Okay.
We should need to vote on it.
Yeah, so all items, I've made, I've made a motion and it's been seconded by Councilwoman Olivia Valentine. So I make another, I make a motion again, Councilwoman Valentine. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote on all items.
Thank you, Kimberly.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Next, we have the city attorney's consent calendar. Mr. City Attorney, I understand that the city clerk will also be reading your consent calendar today and in all future meetings. And if the council has any questions, you'll be answering to those questions, right?
I will, yes.
Okay. Mr. City Clerk, please proceed with items thirty and thirty-one.
Mr. Mayor, the two items in the city attorney's consent calendar for the record are item thirty, claims of Elizor Kilgore and Glenda J. Sims for personal injuries arising from an automobile accident that occurred on November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Item thirty-one, settlement of lawsuit Salvador Mitchum versus City of Hawthorne for five thousand dollars. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city attorney's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items thirty and thirty-one on this calendar?
I move.
Second.
I'll give the motion to Councilwoman Valentine and the second to Mayor Protem. Please vote. Uh-oh. Okay, we need to, we need to reset that?
Yep.
Uh-oh. Okay, please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
All right. Thank you, guys.
To the chair, may I just make a one quick comment? I just want to commend the city attorney and all the staff, because they've been very busy. And thank you for all the work that's been done, has been outstanding. Thank you.
We echo that sentiment. Congratulations. Thank you. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
So the first item was going to be for discussion action items. I kind of have a conflicting information. I thought Dr. Melman had respectfully declined this, but if you show an interest, let's communicate with him. He's not here today anyways. So let's just confirm and have him give me a call just to make sure he's interested.
We'll go ahead and do that. Thank you.
Okay. So now we move on to the elected officials' reports and recommendations. We'll do one pass, so make sure you guys have all your items, I guess, listed, so you guys can run through all of them. No go-bags, please. So now to our wonderful city treasurer, Gregory Fallon. Sir?
Good evening, everybody. Nothing much to report, but I will report that I'm really excited about the hundred years of Hawthorne. Really looking forward to that in July. And yeah, that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Clerk?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I have a few updates. First of all, your ballot for the upcoming June seventh primary election should have been mailed to you. If you did not receive it for any reason and you're a registered voter, please call nine one six nine five three six eight one four. This is a reminder that was mentioned right now by our treasurer, that in preparation of the centennial celebration taking place this July, we are recruiting community members that would like to volunteer for our events. I want to thank everyone who did sign up already. We've had quite a few people actually sign up, so thank you for that. To volunteer, simply go to our website and click on the link labeled Centennial Celebration. And there's four different events that you could sign up for. We provided produce to over seven hundred families are at our giveaway on Saturday, as well as diapers and wipes and as well, and laundry detergent to over a hundred families. So I do want to thank Win L.A. for that donation. Also, I want to thank all our volunteers, who include a few of our Hawthorne staff members. Based off the number of people who are waiting in line for the diapers and wipes, it seems that there is a high need in our community for those items. We will be in front of City Hall Saturday, June fourth, at ten a.m., providing produce, registering voters and handing out face masks that will be donated by the Carfords Union. Next, I want to end my comments tonight by providing my condolences to Monica's family. Monica would not have liked me to mention her tonight, because she did not like attention during council meetings. But it would not have felt right to not say anything about Monica, because she did so much for our city. So I'm going to keep it short. Monica was the heart and soul of the city clerk's office for decades, as well as an amazing person and friend to many of us. So we will miss you very much, Monica. That's all for me. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Olivia Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I attended the Medal of Valor event, in which the council honors the members of its police and fire services for bravery and service beyond the call of duty. As always, our Hawthorne Police Department stood out and several of our officers were recognized. At this time, I would like to acknowledge and congratulate them for distinguished service, Dr. Joe Nakagawa; for life-saving, Michael Lynch, John Yoshida, Jesse Lopez, Jose Gomez, Richard Valdez, and Barrett Luttenbacher. Congratulations to you all and thank you to Chief Michael Ishi for your leadership of this standout department. Last week, the ribbon cutting for Holly Park was held to celebrate the newly renovated park. There was much to celebrate, including the beautiful new playground equipment, the amphitheater, which can be used for community meetings and for musical events, the walking path and the community gardens. I want to thank our city manager, Vaughn Norris, the Community Services Department, the Department of Public Works, Hawthorne Police Department, and the Hawthorne Police Department for making this park a shining star in our city. And I look forward to going to ribbon cuttings for other parks as well. So thank you for that. Have a good night.
Thank you. Councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the public for coming in and for those that's going to be listening to us in, on cable and YouTube. As Ms. Valentine mentioned, you know, I also attend the Medal of Value, so again, thank you to Hawthorne PD for the outstanding work they've been doing. And it's good to see that they're saving lives, so they're not out there jeopardizing people's lives. They're saving lives. So it's a great honor to have our Hawthorne Police Department be well represented on that Medal of Value, or South Bay, or the forty-sixth annual. Like Ms. Valentine also did, you know, Holly Park rededication was outstanding. Thank you, Vaughn, and, and all the parks and wrecks and the public works, the engineering, and for bringing the much-needed dollar from measure A and H that the people voted. So we're going to renovate all these parks and they are going to be an asset to our community, because even at Holly Park, we have a community garden now. And also, just talking about the Holly Park, on June eighteen, that we're going to celebrate the Juneteenth at Holly Park from eleven to three p.m. So Holly Park Homone Association and the Park Village is spearheading the event. I'm going to help them facilitate the, the event and, and Holly Park will be doing almost like a picnic, you know, selling hot dogs to raise money for scholarships. And, and we're going to have a L.A. Love Band playing, so just join us at the June eighteen from eleven to three p.m. Also, I want to say thank you, thank you for the community to come out on May nineteen, when we did the K nine community dinner. It was very successful, because after two years of not doing it because of COVID, so we had a lot of people there eating the spaghetti. So thank you for those volunteers that helped me cook at the kitchen, you know, especially the Kiwanis Club. And all the organization for decorating those beautiful tables and also all the donation that we received. So as is now, we have passed twelve thousand dollars, so, but I know money's still coming. So thank you for all those who donated. Again, I have to congratulate all the cert participants, because, you know, like myself and the mayor, we have done that in the past, so we know it's three days of commitment, three Saturdays, so eight hours a day. So it was like thirty, almost twenty-four hours of, of very good training in case of earthquake and emergency, so we got people in the community can help your neighbors. So it's very good and I recommend everybody to participate on that. Also, I want to mention that the new Starbucks, right, right on El Segundo, it is interesting, because, you know, when we're looking at this small commercial parcel and we don't think that something like a little Starbucks would make that corner of Birch and El Segundo just become a shiny star, right? So now we see people driving through to pick up their coffee, sitting down over there, having coffee, having their pastry. So that's the way, you know, Hawthorne is going to regenerate itself, is to make these little corners of our community become a destination. I'm using Ms. Valentine's word, right? Destination. Hawthorne has to become a destination. And, and talk about destination, you know, on Sunday and Monday, we went to lobby for the city to bring more business to Hawthorne. And, and, and one gentleman that actually he lived in at the three sixty, very young guy, he worked for this developed company, that were telling us that he had been in communications in the past and, and we encouraged him to go back for Trader Joe to come to the hometown buffet. But they did have issues about parking and about the street and the island and, you know, Vaughn, myself and our consultant Beck, we told them, look, if those are issues, bring it to us, to the city council, to the planning department, and we'll fix those problems. Right, Alan? Roads, we can put new signals, left turn, right turn, to accommodate them to come to our city. So those are the kind of communication and connection that we have to build with this new business that wants to expand to our city. And believe it or not, you know, we had a lot of people talk to us about Hawthorne and they're looking into Hawthorne. They want to buy properties to bring more business. So we have to keep ourselves open-minded and make sure that we're going to help this business come to Hawthorne and be successful. So again, I want to thank all of my colleagues and all the head departments, special Vaughn and the city attorney and the parks and, and the community service. Look, this beautiful brochure that's coming out for the summer, outstanding. So thank you for all the work you guys have been doing, managing job, you know, from HR to the public works, to the building and saving, to the code enforcement. So all of you are making us shine over here, because the city is looking pretty good. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good night.
Thank you. Councilmember Angie Rais English?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just first of all acknowledge the community dinner. Thank you so much. Councilmember Montero, that was another great event and great participation from the community to our CERT training course. Thank you to L.A. County Fire and all of those that participated, including the cities of Hawthorne, Lawndale, and Gardena. Thank you for the grand opening, or I should say the renovation, new park, Holly Park. That was a great event. A park that everybody has been waiting, anticipating for. Took a little bit to reopen, but it's a great park and I hope the community enjoys it and takes care of it. it's a great park and I hope the community enjoys it and takes care of it. Also, look forward to the hundred-year anniversary of our city. I really like the Hawthorne Guide. I hope that everyone takes advantage of that. It provides great information on wrecking parks, activities, times, and and dates. Great event there. Want to acknowledge I'd like to acknowledge Monica. When I first started as city clerk in two thousand and five, both Diana and Monica were my staff. Monica and I took up a great friendship, Diana as well. It's lasted a very long time, some twenty-eight years. I had just had lunch with her. She had just participated in my R toy giveaway in December. She was here. She provided gifts. And I just can't express my deepest condolences to her husband, her family, her children, and to the Hawthorne family. City Clerk's Office, when you think of the City Clerk's Office here in the city of Hawthorne, you think of Monica. She was the face. She was the individual that you often came across, assisted in election campaigns and processes. So I'm very emotional tonight, and with good reason. She's going to be deeply missed, gone too soon. And I'm going to cherish all the emails, all the texting that we did, and the laughs, and the pictures that we had. And her memory will forever be in my heart, and I hope those that she touched, you will carry those memories as well. And then I just want to also say that we've we've lost a few employees here in our city due to COVID and to other illnesses, and it's it's it saddens me. However, I have a sense of of thankfulness at the same time that I got to know those individuals and I got to know who they were in every department. And to their families, to everyone that has lost a loved one, my condolences as well. Thank you, Mayor. City Council.
Mayor Proton?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much to say today. First of all, I apologize for walking in late. I have a bit of a back issue that was flaring up and kind of slowed me down today. It's good to see so many old faces, right? I see I see Bill out there in the audience. Haven't seen him quite some time. I really thought about you, to be honest with you, and I'm glad to see that you're well. And so it's definitely some a lot of positive things from us being back in person, right? Get to see some some just community members who've, you know, I've missed seeing Kyle over the last couple of years. So definitely appreciate your faces. I always want to thank staff for just all of your work. You know, staff's our work that keeps the city going. So definitely appreciate that. I want to appreciate the community for coming out and making your voices heard. Those that are paying attention at home, you know, want to definitely encourage you to continue to make your voices heard. Let us know what's important to you so we can go ahead and represent you the best way we can. So thanks a lot.
May I have a go back? Can you go back?
Go ahead.
I just want to express my condolences to Monica's family and just to say that I I always thought of Monica. Monica was always a friend to me from the time I first came onto the City Council. If I needed anything done, she would always look things up for me if I needed things done. She, no matter how busy she was, she was never too busy to answer to to answer a request from me. I tried not to 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 bother her too much because I know she was very, very, very busy. And she would sit in that City Clerk's office and work all day long, and it seemed to me like she never took a break. She was just so extremely dedicated to the city. I have not met very many people that I honestly look at and say, that person is a true public servant, but she was, and she will very much be missed because she was a friend to all of us. So that's all I have to say, and I wish I wish the best to her family and those who loved her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was trying to avoid not to say anything about Monica because, you know, I can still her see her smile, right, when we walk through that office. And like I said, you know, I I know Monica for many, many years, even before I became a city council. So in the community, you know, Kevin, her son. So it is sad to see like Ms. English said, she's gone too soon, and it was so fast because, like I said, I saw her three weeks ago, you know? And she was doing fine, you know, you know, the the she was walking, she was talking, you know? But suddenly, it is sad because like we've been losing a lot of people, you know, like for this past ninety days. I lost three friends at the Hawthorne Muslaj, and now Monica, and and then when we think about that, we lost one million people because of this COVID. And also, that is why I always raised money for cancer because it's a silent killer, and that is where, you know, we have to help find a cure for this terrible disease because, you know, Monica didn't deserve to die so quickly and because she was full of life and wanted to enjoy her retirement, so. But I know God have gained an angel, so I hope God will put her to work in a good way. So thank you.
And just really quick, though, I mean, I, you know, about just losing Monica, I mean, she's probably one of the sweetest people I've met here at City Hall. Just wasn't mad at anybody for anything, right? Just helpful for everybody and I really don't have a lot to say except for, you know, I I share Councilmember Montero's thoughts and the fact that it's just, you know, there's a lot of people that we've lost for the last number of weeks, last number of months, and you know, just reminds us a lot of, of course, our own mortality and and to appreciate, you know, those that are here, why are they here? So, yeah, I remember talking to Monica when she was planning her retirement, and I mean, I I don't want to go into my own long story about it, though, but I definitely, you know, she's definitely going to be missed.
Before I make my final comments for the night, I just want to just also mention about Monica. She she was the first person that welcomed me into City Hall once I was elected. She gave me a sheet. I guess, you know, she was, you know, she wanted to see some good governance, and she gave me a sheet on like twenty things that a good mayor should have, and she gave me that sheet before I started. I mean, another sheet of probably for a city council member, whatever it was, right? So she gave it to us. It's like, you know, she'll support whoever's on the dice, but she wants to. She wanted to see some good governance, and those were those twenty. I still have that sheet at home, and I refer to it, and it makes sense, and a lot of it, I've, you know, tried to abide by that. I've abided by it. It was a good guideline. And everybody here in City Hall was good friends with her. Everybody knew her. And you're right, when you walk in, that's the she was always at the counter, along with Diana, of course, you know, very close, right? And the elected city clerks that have been there, but when you go in there to gas for information, she's usually the one that came up to the counter, and everybody knew her. Vivacious, caring, funny. Hey, you guys all know this, but if you wanted to find out the latest news around City Hall, you could also get it from her, too, so. But that's, you know, that was a cool aspect of her, you know? She loved her job. She loved being here. And she friends to everybody, man, so it kind of hit me, too, so. And, you know, I'm going to miss her just like everybody else, so. Prayers for her family right now because she's in heaven. Good Lord's taking care of her, but we want to make sure that her son, I think she has two sons, right? Two sons and a daughter, possibly? Her two sons and her husband, that they're that they'll be okay, right? So let's just have a Mona silence first before I conclude with my statements. May she rest in peace as well. God's perpetual light shine upon her. So for my concluding statements, I just wanted to also say that the President's Council Dinner was a success, a lot like I said, like I said, at the dinners, like it was great to see all the people, usually all the different homeowners associations and the different groups from around the city sit at the same table all the time. It's like they're assigned or something, man. The the Holly Park table is usually kind of towards the entrance. The one for the for the Holly Glenn Group is to the upper far left, and then over is Ramona, and over further out is Behavioral Health Services over there on the far. I mean, everybody has their spot. So it was really good to see everybody out, man. It's like it made me very happy. The food was great. I liked the sausage sauce, but I don't want to say this, but they got to double up on the servings, man. I had to ask for two. It was a great success, though. It was really good. I did. I didn't hesitate. I was hungry, and it was good. Maybe I was just very hungry, but it was really good. So and thank you to all the student volunteers, the youth volunteers, everybody in the kitchen, and of course, to our to our Police Department and the K nines that were there participating and recipients of the the good benefits of this fundraiser. So thank you to the President's Council. Thank you, Councilmember Montero, for being part of that. Great conversations on the the housing, possibility of the Housing Commission, to see what form we can get from that. That's like some calls that I usually get are about housing issues and then the parking issues. So I think today's meeting covered like what we're considering doing about housing and what we're doing with regards to the parking situation in the city. And I'm extremely excited. I'm super proud to be mayor during the centennial period, right? And can I see that real quick? We have about, I just wanted a net. Well, that's my copy. All right. I thought you were pulling it for me. So there's a on Friday, July eighth, from five o'clock to eight PM, we're going to have a commemorative dinner with, we're going to ask a lot of people. It's like a homecoming dinner. We're not going to have a homecoming game, but we're going to have a homecoming dinner for all the people who are proud to be from Hawthorne, people who've moved away to their retirement homes that can make it back. Let's make sure the people in the audience from the Hawthorne Historical Society put out a message to all those people to buy their tickets so they can come for that week. We have about five events that are going to take place. The first one is on July eighth, Friday. It's going to be from five to eight at the Memorial Center. Individual tickets are, it's a gala. So tickets thirty bucks per person, nonprofits, two hundred and fifty dollars per table, and businesses, we want you guys to help out a little bit, five hundred per table, okay? Formal attire. Does that mean like the tie or like tuxedo, or what are you asking? What are you going to wear, Mr. City Manager?
I'm asking individuals to feel comfortable, come celebrate our hundred-year celebration, and I will be wearing a tie.
Oh, okay.
Maybe a tuxedo.
A tuxedo will be okay, right?
Yeah, because because when you see what the table's decoration is going to be outstanding, so. Grandiose, so you better be come with your tuxedo with that, Mr. Mayor.
A long tail or something. All right, guys. Looking forward to that. So we'll talk and we can figure out what other like little surprises we can have at that dinner. Okay? Videos, probably, you know, maybe guests, some celebrities that used to live here in the city of Hawthorne. We try to see if we can get them back. Not only for that, but for the parade the next day, which is going to be from ten o'clock. The parade's probably going to be at ten o'clock, right? And then it'll end here in front of City Hall, and then everybody comes down from where the parade route is down to City Hall. Last till four PM. It's a free event.
Block party.
Block party. Car shows, games, live music, food trucks, and much more. We have the flyer right here that we're going to put out. I don't think you've sent it out yet, but you've printed them up, right?
And they're out, but also we're mailing five thousand flyers out to the the businesses and schools and
We need to talk to you so you can add the state of the city on there.
Absolutely, yes.
Or that could be its own separate thing. Then on Sunday, what do you say?
We have a state of the city?
Yep. July tenth, ten o'clock to two PM, we're going to have a day at the Hawthorne Museum. The Hawthorne Historical Society Museum that we have, they'll host it. It's their facility, but it's a city facility. But it's at the Hawthorne Historical Society's museum from ten o'clock to two PM. Okay? We're going to have a car show, car show, an art show, a continental breakfast, barbecue lunch. So it's going to be fun. July tenth, which is a Sunday, ten o'clock. Then we're going to have a time capsule opening ceremony. If you walk, once you walk outside, folks who are here or anybody coming to City Hall, there's like a little concrete structure right in front of City, the entrance to City Hall with a plaque. And when did they bury that?
Fifty years ago.
Was it fifty? When I was born in nineteen seventy-one, I guess. Seventy-one.
Have your baby picture in there. That's what Guy Hocker told me.
Guy Hocker, how do you know? Well, that's going to be fun to see. Everybody's going, oh, what a cute baby. Who is he now? It's me.
I want to see how you do, how you do it.
So the time capsule opening ceremony is going to be on July twelfth, which is Tuesday from ten to two. Okay?
Are we going to have the opportunity to put new things in from this year?
I hope so. We could probably think about it because
I think we should.
Yeah. Well, as long as we make sure that this is going to be our permanent location for a long time. I don't want to move from here. I guess we should.
But it will still have that box in there anyway, so they they will not move it.
Yeah, I guess. Wow, so that's, we got to really think about that decision. Can't really like do it. Well, that's going to be fun, and I want to see what they pull out of there. But I don't think Guy Hocker was mayor at that time. He was mayor like about in seventy-eight. Seventy-eight.
But he said he was there.
And so we're in planning stages of state of the city. Can you tell everybody about that? Or should I just go ahead?
I think you should.
Okay, so we're going to have a, it's going to be on the Monday, right?
That's correct.
Monday, we're going to have it probably most likely at the Memorial Center. It's going to be open to everyone. There's not going to be any more of this, like, pay-for-table thing. There's not going to be any more, you know, sponsorships, nothing. We're going to have it free for the whole community to come out on Monday, I believe, is going to be. We had that open day right there, so everybody's going to be able to come out. We'll have chairs. We'll have a tent. We'll have TV displays so that everybody can see.
It'll be outside?
Outside, Monday, July eleventh. And it's going to be, the speech will start at seven o'clock. We're deciding whether to for it to start at five thirty or six o'clock, but give people an opportunity, all the hard-working residents of the city of Hawthorne to come and hear the good news. No longer is it going to be exclusive to businesses and those people who have money. This is the community state of the city. We want to make sure all of you are there to hear the message of what we've done, what the challenges are remaining, and what we're going to do for the future. Okay? Open for all of everyone. More details to come. And I know I probably went over my time, but I just want to conclude. There's so much to be proud of. I've, when I go on Wikipedia and I look at other cities, I look at the notable people section in the Wikipedia. You guys know what I'm talking about, some of you? The notable people that come from a specific city. And I look at some like Downey or Palos Verdes or Torrance, just like one or two, like some, you know, low known, you know, really, I never, I know who that is, but it's no big deal. We've had so many people, starting off with the Beach Boys, man, like right around the corner from where I my parents live, right? The Beach Boys, all of them were had some were born here in the city of Hawthorne. We had Marilyn Monroe when she was like, she wasn't, she was adopted. She lived in a foster home, and for that time that she was in a foster home, she lived in the Ramona area, I believe. Okay, the Ramona area, okay? Or I think it could have been the Burley Track, but in Burley Track, right? See? Then we had Mr. Sonny Bono, who went to Inglewood High School, but he worked at the one of the supermarkets here in the city of Hawthorne, and he lived in He lived in the city of Hawthorne for half of his youth. So that's Sonny Bono guys from Sonny and Cher. I got you babe, I got you. There are much more than that, right? Chris Montez, great singer. So he had that song, "Call Me." You guys know which one. If we play it, you guys will remember. Let's see if we can bring them out. Okay? Eddie Munster, used to live here in the city of Hawthorne as well. I don't know if anybody knew that. Eddie Munster used to, Butch Patrick, Curtis Conway, football player, Michael Marsh, used to run track here at the city of Hawthorne and they all played football. I think Curtis Conway, I think, played baseball for a couple of years. Jim Thorpe as well, the best athlete in the, in the world. Probably nobody's matched up with all his performances in basketball and football and baseball and he's all-around player. Russell Westbrook, Emmett Rhodes, Giasy Sardes, who's on the national United States team, and many more people that could probably come corrupt. The rapper, if you guys like all that. Just so much to be proud of. I mean, I like rap. More the old school stuff, but, but it's a lot to be, feel proud of, okay? As we approach that day, we'll give you some more little notes. So.
Giasy Sardes?
Giasy Sardes, yeah. So the last thing is we're going to, we're going to end the meeting in memory of Father Greg King, the pastor from St. Joseph Church, my pastor, and big community religious leader. And he passed away about two, two and a half weeks ago. And he lived here in the city. A lot of priests and a lot of pastors go to serve at parishes or churches that are not, are away from where they were born or where they used to live or where they grew up. But he came back to the city of Hawthorne and served at his home parish where he went to elementary school. He went to local high school, St. Bernard's. And he really took the parish to a different level. So we're going to miss him. The community is going to miss him and just may he rest in peace as well. So not only in his memory, but the memory of Monica again, and the two previous employees that have passed away recently, and for those children and those adults that have passed away in Texas. Let's have one final moment of reflection and prayer for them, please. Okay? And may they rest in peace and may God's perpetual light shine upon them as well. Okay? This meeting is now adjourned at 7:52, okay? Everybody have a great evening.